Thank you.
We will now go to the third item, an overview of current proposed shelters, facilities, and programs available to serve those unsheltered community members currently in unapproved encampments. And this looks like our dear friend Tara Sundine.
Thank you. Good afternoon. During your September 28th council meeting, council members Stone and Liloquist asked for agenda items relating to those living unsheltered in our community, city departments' roles and responsibilities as it relates to tent encampments, as well as shelter plans for this upcoming winter. We've put together a presentation that addresses those two topics while providing a very brief overview of the continuum of housing and all the agencies working to solve this very complex societal issue. Samuel Letts, Lieutenant Crass, and I will be your presenters this afternoon, but we have all the affected department heads, expert staff, and a representative from the county health department here with us today. We're all available to answer questions or participate in your discussion this afternoon. So Samuel Letts will present the first few slides. Samya.
Thanks Tara. Samuel Letts, Housing and Services Program Manager for the city. The graphic here represents the continuum of housing services with those that are most service-intensive on the left and those that are least service-intensive on the right. Incomes tend to go higher, of course, as we move from left to right on the continuum, and one-time subsidies are typically higher for the housing programs on the right, while ongoing annual service funding needs are highest for the programs toward the left. The city is involved with funding programs that span this whole continuum, and all of these types of programs, with the exception of the homeownership program, serve people who experience homelessness to varying degrees. One of the reasons this graphic is useful is because it depicts the visibility of those seeking shelter, with those served through other programs being less visible. In fact, most people seeking assistance are sheltered, but those who are unsheltered are the folks in the community that are most frequently noticed. And just a note, when I say the words "our" or "we" during this presentation, I'm generally referencing a broader network of government and community agencies involved in addressing homelessness. Next slide, please. This reflects that same continuum, and I'll provide some examples of the types of programs available and supported locally. The blue box includes options for people experiencing homelessness in need of immediate solutions, such as low-barrier shelter beds, the Northwest Youth Services pad shelter, DVSA programs, Sun House, Interfaith Homes, as well as diversion programs and motel vouchers provided by the Opportunity Council, Lydia Place, and others. Transitional housing, the green box, includes options that offer supported accommodations for special-needs populations, like the Opportunity Council's Recovery House that's currently under development now, and Sun Community Service Homes like Greggy's House. The orange category, nonprofit and public housing, is a broad category that includes most of the multifamily residential development funded by the city, including the Samish Commons Development some of you heard about this morning. Permanent supportive housing projects like Francis Place and 22 North are also included, and other affordable housing developments like Via Santa Fe, Eleanor Apartments. And a note, just the city works with developers on projects that we fund to try and integrate units specifically for homeless-on-entry households into every project possible, including rental projects that may serve households earning up to 60% of the area median income. Households experiencing homelessness, of course, have a whole host of needs that vary tremendously. Some may do best in the purpose-built and heavily-service-enriched permanent supportive housing developments, and others prefer mixed-income environments. The affordable private rentals category is mainly about rent assistance that's offered through partnerships between nonprofit agencies and private landlords, like the Tenant-Based Rental Assistance Program and Opportunity Council and Lydia Place's Rapid Re-Housing Programs. And the bars along the top show where the city and county invest their resources. Next slide, please. The county is the lead agency when it comes to addressing homelessness. A little background on this, in 2006, the state legislature passed the Homeless Housing and Assistance Act, which granted document recording fees to counties for use in helping to meet the needs of people experiencing homelessness, with local county governments placed in the lead role unless they chose to opt out. These lead agencies are also responsible for writing the local plan to address homelessness, for administering the annual point-in-time count, for reporting data and ensuring that nonprofit partners report data into the Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development's Homeless Management Information System, or HMIS, and for following the state and federal coordinated entry guidelines, which include ensuring the local crisis response system prioritizes people who are most in need, and that services meet certain performance benchmarks set by the State Department of Commerce. You can see on this slide that both the city and county spend, on average, about $5 million a year on housing and services, but the county funds are focused on services, whereas the cities are focused on the capital funding. Note the bar on the right labeled HSC Operations. This refers to the Homeless Service Center that we'll talk about now in the next slide, please. Over a decade ago, the city and county came together with local agencies to move toward the best practice of having a single point of entry for households needing help, and ultimately began a partnership with the Opportunity Council to develop the Homeless Service Center, which began operations in 2008. The Homeless Service Center acts as a coordinated point of entry for people needing services, with many local agencies participating as referral agencies that take referrals from our local housing pool list, and this graphic depicts that system. Clients go through an intake process with the help of case management staff, through which the clients self-report their own needs and vulnerabilities. When an opening occurs at a participating housing program, Homeless Service Center staff make the referrals from the housing pool list to the agency program staff as appropriate. The Federal Department of Housing and Urban Development and the State Department of Commerce have oversight over this kind of system and offer pass-through funding to the county and the Opportunity Council to help administer it. There are other agencies locally that help people experiencing homelessness, but those who participate in this referral system are the ones that are listed here on this slide. And for those agencies listed, sometimes only one building or one program out of many they may operate take referrals through the housing pool. Next slide, please. In 2019, about 3,000 people in total were assisted through that housing pool Homeless Service Center coordinated system I was just talking about. Note that the Base Camp program of the mission is not included in that overall number. The housing pool is maintained by the Homeless Service Center and updated frequently to ensure it's reflective of those who are actively seeking services. The total number of households awaiting help as part of the housing pool is reflective of both the numbers of households conducting intakes coming into the housing pool each month and the numbers of referrals made to those participating agencies for stable housing and services, which, of course, decreases the number in the housing pool. When you hear people talk about the goal of getting to functional zero with regard to homelessness, that means that these intakes and referrals are roughly imbalanced with one another, leaving no one to experience homelessness for more than a very brief period. We're not there yet, as our rate of referrals to programs is not outpacing our intakes. The housing pool numbers are distinct from the annual point-in-time count. The point-in-time count is a census, an attempt to count all the people experiencing sheltered and unsheltered homelessness at a given time in January every year. In January of 2020, the count was 707 individuals, a bit over the prior year. The majority of people reflected in the point-in-time count are sheltered. In this case, 69% sought and found some kind of shelter. Being unsheltered in the point-in-time count means not sleeping in a place meant for habitation, including in a car or a tent. Even when there's space available, some people prefer to sleep outdoors, as we hear anecdotally from the homeless outreach team members. Some reasons that they tell us for this are wanting more autonomy and privacy, substance use or addiction issues, not wanting to follow certain rules, or social anxiety and fear of crowds. We also hear that the improvements at Base Camp at its current location have led to some people who have traditionally opted out of shelter to give it a try. The types of things that seem to make a big difference, the biggest one seems to be having storage available, of course, more bathrooms, having showers, and more space overall. Next slide, please. Slides seven and eight give a glimpse into only one month of housing pool data. Please keep in mind that these figures can change wildly from month to month, as there are many reasons that people find themselves in the difficult situation of experiencing homelessness. What does seem to be consistent, however, is that the majority of households on the housing pool self-report at least one barrier as to why it is especially challenging for them to find housing. And in this case, reported barriers include owing or making payments to a past landlord, having one or more felonies in the past five years, four or more misdemeanors in the past five years, an arson conviction, anyone in the household with open cases or warrants, anyone in the household with a meth charge, arrest, or conviction, registered sex offender, history of arrest, charge, or conviction for a violent criminal act, or simply just having no rental history at all, having received a pay or vacate notice, or received an eviction notice. Next slide, please. Similarly, it's typical for the majority of households on the housing pool to self-report needs or issues that result in a need for more than just a roof overhead to help propel them out of homelessness. Examples of these types of needs are having a mental health issue, a developmental disability, a drug addiction or alcohol addiction issue, or a chronic health condition. And Tara, I think it's back to you for the next slide.
Thank you, Samya. We're going to move into shelter capacity and the winter shelter issue. As you all know, staff, not just the planning and community development staff, but our legal department, and in particular, our public works department, worked this last year with the Lighthouse Mission to help them move out of a facility that was not safe for its guests due to COVID. But what that brought us is it brought us the opportunity to build some more capacity. So the Base Camp facility can house up to 200, or I should say, shelter up to 200 individuals, whereas the drop-in center could shelter about 150. So this Base Camp facility has created capacity that we had last year with the drop-in center, Civic Field Shelter, and Northwest Youth Services Shelter all combined. This slide here shows you all of the agencies involved in emergency shelter. We focus a lot on the Lighthouse Mission, and they are responsible for about 200 of these 335 shelter beds. But as you can see, there's other agencies involved as well. So we gained 50 beds with Base Camp, and then there's another five beds that is associated with an RFP that Watcom County recently released. Watcom County has received, on behalf of the entire county, additional dollars from the federal and state governments to help homeless individuals this year. And even though they offered quite a few hundred thousand of dollars, they only received response from two. I shouldn't say only, we're happy that two of our agencies responded, the Y for five beds, and Lydia Place for two motel stays. Also this last year, we increased motel stays. If you recall, Samya and I have discussed this with you in preparation of last winter, in that we were hearing that more seniors were finding themselves unsheltered and particularly living in vehicles. And so we expanded the city's investment in motel stays, and we expanded it financially, but also increased the eligibility from families and children, families with children, to also include seniors. And so you see the capacity coming in, this is year-round capacity, coming into this year exceeds what we had last year during winter shelter capacity. Now speak about this coming winter. For those of you that have been on council for a few years, our solutions to winter shelter look different every year, depending on what's happening with the providers and just changes that have taken place with those that are interested. This year, we're looking at starting out with a capacity that exceeded last year's. Plus, the Lighthouse Mission is working with Christ the King on an overflow shelter. So again, we're looking a little, at a slightly different operation, but Christ the King was one of the severe weather shelter providers last year. This year, they're stepping up and doing a bit more, but they're going to work in concert with the Lighthouse Mission. They want this to be one of the Lighthouse Mission's programs with Christ the King's staff and volunteers helping operate the program. So the overflow shelter will be located at the former drop-in center on Holly Street in Old Town. They have finalized kind of the layout that they can accommodate up to 39 guests in this facility. This is the old drop-in center, a reason why we needed to get them out of Old Town so that they could serve more people. So this coming winter, the mission, 200 of these beds, plus the 39 in Old Town, I should say Base Camp, plus the 39 in Old Town, will be able to serve almost 240 people. Last year, at our kind of peak capacity at the drop-in center, at Civic, at Northwest Youth Services, and at the severe weather shelters, we saw at peak 212 guests. In addition, the Watcom County Health Department has reached out to all of the operators of severe weather shelter from last year to see if they were interested in providing that service again. And none of the operators from last year, other than Christ the King stepping forward, have the human resources needed due to how stretched the congregations and leadership are within their own congregations. And so it's really not an issue of financial wherewithal, it's an issue of the resources that are required to put on a shelter like this. So Anne is available to ask additional questions, or answer additional questions. I want to talk about Base Camp capacity. Samya did touch on this a bit. We've been hearing that Base Camp is serving about 20% more people than it did this time last year. And after meeting with the Homeless Services Center and realizing that the housing pool has not increased year over year, except for we're hearing that families that are on that housing pool, there's a bit of a backlog there, and that's due to the system not being, not having enough capacity within the system to move through the system, to move out of an emergency bed and into transitional, and out of transitional and to move into permanent housing. So we do have an increased need in family housing, but the issue of single and maybe couples not seeing an increased capacity issue there, which led us to kind of realize that the facility itself, and especially as Samya touched on it, the fact that people have a place to store their belongings during the day seems to account for kind of the number-one issue, as well as COVID required the shutdown of programs like Maple Alley Inn, which increased the number of individuals seeking meals and food at Base Camp or at Bellingham High School. And so it opened the eyes of people and maybe kind of changed their perceptions of what type of service was really being offered at Base Camp. So the good news is this new, this new facility that's adequately sized for the population, that has the right amenities, that has good airflow and outdoor courtyard, is attracting more people to stay in the facility. So we're seeing more people utilize the facility. Samya also touched on some of the reasons that HOT has told us why people don't seek shelter, that social anxiety, addiction issues, fear of crowds, privacy, and sometimes not, just simply not wanting to follow rules. And so people are choosing to live in tents in our parks and along our creek corridors, and this has been happening for many, many years. The city has developed a response to these encampments, and we've developed a coordinated response that involves multiple departments. And so I want to touch on a question that council member Stone has asked about the various departments that are involved here. We aren't presenting today on the camp procedure, the cleanup procedure, that Claudia Viscara presented not too long ago, but we're here to answer any questions or provide that overview if you need it. So there's five departments that are involved in tent encampments. Of course, the mayor's office and the mayor provides the administrative oversight of the entire effort. The Parks Department really represents our community as the public property owner, and they are responsible for enforcing park rules and regulations. And our rules and regulations don't allow camping in our parks. They receive complaints from park users or neighbors of parks, and they also conduct minor cleanups of abandoned camps. Our Public Works Department fulfills its obligation to protect the public health by controlling waste. The Public Works Department has the citywide litter and waste control program and has for many decades within its obligations. It also fulfills its obligations to protect the environmental health of our water bodies. And you see in a picture here on the screen is a former campsite, human waste, within just a few feet of one of our creeks. Public Works also, at times, funds the operations and the contractors that we hire to remove and dispose of waste. The Police Department has two very distinct roles within its department. One is in its Outreach Division, and this is where Claudia Viscara and her team are housed, and they provide the overall coordination. They are not uniformed police officers. Their job is to oversee this program from the very beginning, from outreach, all the way through the cleanup activities. They do coordinate with our service providers. I do want to mention the homeless outreach team, or we refer to them as the HOT team. They are not part of our tent encampment team, but the city has a contract with them, and that's one of the roles of our department, to help people that are living unsheltered connect to services that we have in our community to help them. And so we always want to make sure that those occupants of encampments have access to services, and that is how HOT helps us. The Outreach Division coordinates with the other departments, particularly Public Works and Parks, on priority of those highest-need locations. And then they also, in the event that this is the case, they identify and store any valuables that are left behind, any valuable property or identification, and keeps that for the occupants of the encampments. Then there's the role of the uniformed police officers. It's not their job to oversee the coordination of this program, but they're there to accompany staff, to ensure due process to the occupants, and to provide safety for staff, contractors, and the occupants by being present. And then finally, my department's involved in contracting with the various agencies, you just heard from Samya, as well as the homeless outreach team, so we can make sure that the people that are living unsheltered in our community know of the different alternatives. And I'm going to turn it back over to, or turn it over to Lieutenant Crass to touch on the next two slides.
Good afternoon, council. I'm going to talk about why we clean up camps. Mainly, it's, we're obligated to ensure the health and safety of our community and the health and safety of our environment. It's been talked about, touched on a little bit, but we are taking into consideration the unsheltered, the neighbors, people that are impacted by the encampments. And what we saw when there was some pauses in the encampment cleanups is some of the camps grew in size, and it seemed like there were more camps being reported. And what this happens is it leads to some kind of unclear standards and accountability. These camps grow. It appears that it's okay to stay in camp in these locations, and they're problematic locations often. That's where we see some of our environmental impacts. And when we get larger groups like that, we get, tend to have some defiant attitudes and some refusal to leave even when they are contacted. We've seen this along the ways around different sensitive areas. That leads to frustrated citizens, frustrated businesses. We field the complaints from these folks, and a lot of them are empathic, and they understand the situation, but they're having trouble tolerating the encampments and what comes with them. With these camps, when they're, when they grow and they're farther in size, and some of them are a little more remote, it's harder for outreach to occur, for resources in our community to find these camps. There's often more camps than they can get to in a timely manner. And then some of these camps, once you stop, it's very hard to catch your ground. Often, we end up cleaning the same sites over and over repeatedly, and because as soon as we clean, they go right back to the state they were in pretty quickly. Some of our parks and green spaces kind of become not really desirable locations, or they're perceived as unsafe. We hear this frequently. We only clean up one day a week, and so our impact to get to these camps is not great. We hear from fire and some of the calls that they respond to camps, they're requiring the police to come with them for security, as well, as we mentioned before. But we often have really unsafe conditions. It's either close to residence structures, apartment complexes, underneath bridges, things like that. Last year, we had several propane tanks cook off with a fire at a camp, was near a gas line. We avoided, it could have been a really bad situation. It also puts the occupants of these camps at risk, and it puts first responders or people responding to these at risk. With our dry season, we had a lot of potential wildfire issues and things like that. When we look at our environmental standards, we look at what is being put into our creeks and waterways. I was notified that the hatchery had anticipated a return of a salmon run, and many of the salmon were collected out of the holding area and eaten. And it'd been like approximately 60 years since that salmon run had occurred, so they were, it was impacted severely there. So what we find is if these camps are not addressed, the impact of them grows in, like I said, the health, the safety, and the environmental concerns. Go ahead with the next slide. in, in, like I said, the health, the safety, and the environmental concerns. Go ahead with the next slide. We talk about some of the misconceptions out there. Um, all our camp cleanups are complaint driven and uh the complaints are received through community members and other city departments. Uh, the police in the city don't actively search for encampments. Uh, we, we address the ones that have come in through our reporting systems. Um, camps that have a minute, minimal impact on health, safety, and environment can remain in place. Not every complaint results in a cleanup. Uh, since May, we had about a hundred and ninety-two camps reported. Uh, sixty-seven of those camps weren't addressed uh for various reasons. A lot of the, the camps that were cleaned were the same campsites over and over. Uh, we often get told about sweeps. Uh, we view a sweep as indiscriminate and indiscriminate sweeps aren't conducted. Cleanups are prioritized, notifications given prior to the scheduled cleanup date. Um, we don't give without notification. There are certain exigent circumstances and right of ways where we can handle it if it's impeding the roadway or things like that, or less time can be given in parks uh because it is posted and we do have no camping allowed in parks. Uh, the homeless outreach team tries to connect occupants uh to shelters, community resources, and services. We prefer and we try to make arrangements so outreach can be done prior to the cleanups. They're notified when the camps are reported. Uh, we do our best to identify personal property valuables left behind, and those are retained at the Police Department for possible retrieval. Uh, Camp Cleanup Coordinator Viscara makes, makes all efforts that she can to store that and get the people back their property if we can identify who it belongs to. Um, oftentimes people will tell us, oh, all camp property is destroyed, and that's just not, not accurate. Good.
Okay, thank you, Lieutenant Craft. And just a couple more slides here. Um, you know, I talked about a lot of the capacity that was built this year um on the crisis response side, on the shelter side of things. But just as a reminder that um while we need some crisis solutions such as shelters and motel stays, we must remain uh focused on creating those permanent solutions as a community. And we do that wherever we can. We partner with so many agencies, and here's a, an example of a few that are coming our way. We'll do even one unit at a time if that's what it takes, but helping uh Lydia Place with their heart house, hopefully they'll be under construction soon. Samia talked uh and touched on Samish Commons this afternoon and this morning. I just want to emphasize that all of our large um developments, we're always trying to integrate units. You'll never know which ones they are. Neighborhoods will never know which ones they are, even the residents of the buildings, but we want the operators to set aside units for people that are just exiting homelessness. And this helps us create um capacity in the system. The rest of the units in that building can become uh units for, for those that were formerly home, homeless. And then we just keep creating that capacity. Um, we find that, that having these woven through the community is a, we can, we can accomplish things a lot quicker sometimes this way. So we're always working on that. As you know, we do have another cr- crisis response that we're looking into right now. We've got a RFP out for safe parking. Um, this is to provide a place for people to be safe, but still live in their vehicles. We're we're acknowledging that this is not where we want to be long-term as a community, but we are looking to see if there are some potential operators. And Samia tou- touched on this system. I mean, this is a fantastic um system that we should be very proud of as a community. I know that we are looked to by many other communities um at the strength of this system. As Samia mentioned, it's been over a decade in the making. And this is the type of system that um is able to respond to emerging needs and opportunities and build more and more capacity. We are welcome, or we welcome to work with any new qualified providers that want to provide services or provide housing to to our homeless um community members. Uh, and especially those that want to work in a coordinated way. And with that, I will turn it over to you, Jean.
Hey, thank you very much, Tara. Questions, comments, Council? You want to take the screen down there, Tara? For somebody, oh, thank you. Okay, anybody have any questions for anybody here? Councilmember Hamel.
Hi, thanks for the presentation. Um, my question is regarding the motel vouchers. There was a, a pretty good uptick in the number of those available. And I just wanted to get a, a sense of, does that represent more motel partners, if you will, coming online or, or just more units within the, the same grouping of um provider or motels?
Um, that particular reference was focused on the program that the city has with the Opportunity Council. And Watcom County funds that program as well. We also fund Lydia Place, um but those numbers weren't even included because we were having a hard time um comparing apples to oranges, if you will, getting the right numbers from last year. We did hear um for the first time last Friday from Emily with Lydia Place that they were concerned about financial capacity coming this winter. And so Councilmembers Liliquus and Stone were on that uh at part of that meeting. That's the first I had heard of it. That's the first that uh Ann Deacon had heard of it. Um, we are, my staff's already reaching out to the county and will be making sure that there shouldn't be a fi- financial reasons should not be a reason why we can't house or um I wouldn't say house, shelter families with children and seniors this winter. So I will let you know if we have a capacity issue, but I don't think we should. Um, but the County Health Department has received ample resources that should be able to help, help with that. Did, did I answer your question, Dan? Okay.
Councilmember Huffman, and then Anderson, and then Vargas.
Uh, so, thank you for that presentation. It was really informative. It was a really nice update. Um, I, I've been on a, a camp cleanup right along. Um, and it was really enlightening, really eye-opening. I saw camps that looked just like those photos. Um, one next to a creek uh that had a lot, a lot of waste. Um, and so completely understand the, the need for those cleanups. Um, I think the one thing that really stuck with me during that day and still sticks with me um is that the people that, that were, that have those encampments, they're fairly well-known, it seemed, to the, the cleanup teams. Um, and that it doesn't, it doesn't, I don't know where they're going um or where they're invited to go, or what, what is expected after we clean, clean up these camps? I think that's the thing that really sticks with me is, is there isn't somewhere to go. Um, and I understand some of it's personal choice with these folks, and some of it is they aren't allowed in, in the shelter um in the, in base camp for various reasons. Uh, there are some restrictions. And so I think, I mean, this is, this is the issue that we're all grappling with, you know, all across the country. This isn't new, and it's a difficult one, but I just, I where, where should these folks be going? Should we be providing that space? Who should be providing that space? It's we, we have so many long-term solutions to this problem, and that's wonderful. Hopefully this will not be an issue in twenty or thirty years, but what's the short-term solution for where these folks should go if they can't be in the places that they're choosing? And I don't know who, who, if that's a big rhetorical question, or, or if anybody has an answer to that at all.
I think it's a bigger discussion issue, but I'll, I'll say right now, the, the simple, the, the short answer is the emergency solutions that we've identified as a community, that's where we are expecting people to go. But you heard us recognize that some people are refusing to go to the options that have been provided by the community, like base camp.
Councilmember Anderson.
Thank you, and thank you for the presentation. I had a similar question to Holly further down on my list, but the first thing um I'd like to ask is and if you could confirm that the emergency weather, the inclement weather shelters open, I believe when the temperatures reach um twenty-eight degrees. And I know that's been, and you could correct me if it's thirty-two, but if not, um you know, the difference between thirty-two degrees when it's freezing and twenty-eight um can be quite debilitating for people who are unsheltered. So if in fact it is, the threshold is the twenty-eight degrees, is there any um room for negotiation that that temperature could be changed for the threshold of when um that new shelter could be opened?
This is Ann Beck with the County Health Department. I'm happy to answer this one. You know, part of our role here at the Health Department was to respond to that in a public health manner. Um, and we had, I think it was about four meetings last year during the summertime to talk about this. There was a lot of research that went into it. It pulled a lot of data, looked at usage of shelter, looked at um when uh frostbite sets in, and I will, I will be clear, there's no one number, that's the magic number that, that affixes it, and there's no number that, that we can settle on that makes, that, that makes everybody feel really good about it. It's really challenging. One of the things to keep in mind, as Tara said, is there is the human resource um factor. We have to have a place for people to go if we're going to open um at thirty-two degrees everywhere, and there, the, there is such a, there's such a need. So it was a fine balance of trying to figure out what would be a temperature where we would be able to have enough people to help, or enough resources to help provide space for folks to be able to go, um where we were trying to provide some kind of warmth. Uh, so it was, it was really a challenging conversation, and it was, that was the number that was settled on by that group. It included city staff, county staff, um elected officials. We had some public health folks talk. We had our housing team here come in and give some research, so at this point, there's no, um, we're not looking to change it. We're sticking at the twenty-eight degrees. And part of that also too is that we, it's the resources, it's the human resources to be able to provide a space for folks beyond what's already there for the non-severe weather time.
And Lisa, if I might just add on to the shelter that the mission is working with Christ the King on, that is going to be based on capacity at the mission, so regardless of what the weather is. Right? So that's the goal there, that it's not just going to operate on those at twenty-eight degrees. It's going to operate if the capacity, so long as the human resource is available, it's going to operate when capacity.
Shelter to families and getting them into low-income housing and um, and focusing on the long term and not using um all of our resources for things that uh are continual. Um, so i- i- in regards to that, um, I just wanted to um say that I think that you've come up with some very good solutions this year in regards to helping people who need immediate help while focusing our program dollars on long-term solutions. So I just wanted to recognize everyone for that because I know it's a very difficult balance when there's people in need, um but ensuring that we are uh looking long-term um and that we can reduce that point account, uh headcount uh every year would be wonderful with long-term solutions. So I just wanted to say this is very complex and it's good for people to know how many agencies are actually involved and the kind of collaboration it takes from the city uh in order to do that. So just wanted to thank you for that.
Thank you. Anything else? Councilmember Anderson?
Thank you. I'm taking a look at the aspect of uh camp cleanup. I know that the city is providing porta-potties throughout the city. We, I think, talked about that early in the year, so some of the trailheads and areas where we know um are issues, so that, you know, obviously, especially in COVID with so many businesses being closed, you know, that are um unsheltered population, they have body functions that need to be taken care of. So has there been an analysis on um whether or not we have sufficient uh porta-potties out there? Are they being used? Is the information other than at base camp being provided so people know where they can go? And are we providing dumpsters? So we, you know, we heard that we go in, and I know it's not inexpensive, we go in and we clean up some of these uh very concerning areas that um there's mass garbage, and then people come back the next day and, or soon after. And I know we don't want to encourage camping in our sensitive areas, but I'm just wondering like if you go down to C Street and D Street and behind Parbury's, that area there has, you know, a lot of individuals are vehicle camping in there and garbage is piling up. So have we looked at putting garbage dumpsters in areas so that individuals who would want to dispose of their garbage would have that opportunity to be able to do that, lessening hopefully some of the work we'd have to do as a city? And if they are being provided, um I, I'd sure like to know where, because um I've been kind of trying to scout that out, and I believe that might be Eric with his hand.
Yeah, so we, I, I was on the phone with somebody else, but I, I think I heard the question about providing dumpsters for a couple of places around town, if that's, did I get that right? So yes, we have done that, and we continue to do that. We've installed them in a number of locations. We, we tried one uh down in Happy Valley uh just off of Bill McDonald Parkway. Uh, we knew we had some campers in the, in the Patton Creek area and wanted to encourage them to use those dumpsters. What we found out very quickly is that the neighborhood started using them. And they were being filled not with uh waste you'd expect from a, from a campsite, but with construction debris or landscaping debris. Uh, and so it wasn't meeting its intended purpose, and we, we removed that particular dumpster. We had another one across from City Hall and very quickly found for the same reason that it was being filled with household furniture and other things of that nature. We still have a dumpster down on Cornwall, and Mike, if I got this right. Uh, and that is being used successfully. And so the, there are some folks who are needing to camp and, and spend in their vehicles, and they're self-managing that. They're using that dumpster to some success, so we have done it in some places. But the, uh, the general trend is we find that they are abused by neighborhood residents and not used to benefit uh campers.
Okay, is there any other questions? Councilmember Stone. Councilmember Liliquus, lay it next.
Well, could we back up? The bathroom part didn't get answered, I don't think, in the detail that was requested.
We, Eric, I had asked about um
Porta-potty.
We have uh porta-potties around the city, if those are um in published other, I know that the uh base camp will let people know where those are at, but are they uh published in a way that people know where they're located?
Uh, well, in terms of the publication, I looked to the HOT team or somebody from that to help describe where those are at, but we do have porta-potties at various locations throughout uh the city and are adding more in the downtown this, this next, this, this month. Um, I, there are challenges, challenges with that as well. Uh, but we certainly can make those available where it's appropriate and not.
Councilmember Stone, Councilmember Stone, then Liliquus.
I was going to answer the question, though.
Well, just, we need to move on. Go ahead, Hannah.
I know we're over time. Um, a couple points of clarification and then um a question. So one, looking at the pie chart, that's the point in time count with unsheltered and sheltered numbers. I know that says it's a Watcom County homeless population, so that's county-wide, and then I just want to confirm that those sheltered numbers, does that include individuals who are staying at base camp, for example? And so the unsheltered numbers are simply people out in public spaces, um either in their tents or cars, or how are those defined?
Yes, you're right on, on both of those issues. It's county-wide. And um base camp is, well, last year it was drop-in center was included in the sheltered number.
Okay, so beyond those capacity numbers that we're looking at that have increased thankfully, but beyond that, we have two hundred-some odd individuals in our community who are still not um provided shelter at this point in time.
That, or that don't seek shelter.
Okay, or
Vehicles, tents, or, or no tents.
Okay. Um, and so looking at the continuum of services that also had the investments by county and city when we're looking at approximately, you know, five million an- annually, know that a lot of these programs are phenomenal, and, and I'm, you know, happy that we're, we're making those investments. Um, but when we look at the far left-hand side as far as emergency shelter and homeless prevention services, do we know what percentage of that investment is made at that end of the continuum, like what our action and investment is at that? Like what our action and investment is at that beginning stage of that continuum?
Samia, do we know that or can we?
Couldn't tell you off the top of my head, but it's something we can get back to you with. And we try to coordinate with the county. They fund a lot more of that than we do.
Okay, because my concern and the reason why I wanted to have this discussion, and I know that initially, you know, Tara's response, I think, you know, rightfully so, is that, you know, Councilmember Huffman's question leads to a much broader discussion. And I think that's the discussion that I'm wanting the council to have. Because really that roughly 30%, when we look at the whole pie of people who are more visible, as we acknowledged, right? Those are the individuals in the streets who are creating complaints by, you know, other members of the community that then trigger action by, you know, the cleanup crew and others. But so they're more visible, but also with much greater need. So we're talking about individuals who may be, you know, medically fragile, have addiction issues, right? These are people who are very difficult to, to place and, and the heavy lift, but at the same time, they're not going away, right? They're members of our community who are here and visible. And so my reaction was similar to Councilmember Huffman's in the work that I did with Lieutenant Crass and his team is it's wonderful to have the procedures outlined so that we know and we can hold each other accountable to ensuring that we have proper notice and, you know, hot involvement and, you know, all of those pieces. You know, that people's property is being protected so that they can come pick it up later. But separate from that, the idea is, is that yes, people are then supposed to move. And the question is, where are they supposed to move to? It's the similar question that's raised when we talked about the protection zone and the reason why that doesn't sit very well with me. I support it because I want to support, you know, individuals and guests who are staying at base camp. But at the same time, we're moving them out of that protection zone, but where to? I mean, what is it that we're going to do? And so a lot of the investments that we make short-term, we talk about even, you know, hotel vouchers, the camp cleanup. But I understand that there's a need for that, but ultimately kicking that down the road, you know, isn't going to create any long-term solutions. And so I'm asking the council to, especially during budget, you know, season, to be thinking about where those, you know, investments can be made to address these particular needs. So I don't know that there was a question in there, but I know we're short on time. And so I guess the question is, can we have further discussion at a future date?
Sure. Councilmember Liliquis.
Well, first I wanted to answer Lisa's question about porta-potty. Is it a recent brief and we heard a similar story to what we just heard about dumpsters? Is that some of those porta-potties are well-used, uses attended? Others are trashed and tipped over. So it's kind of location-specific and kind of the culture of the users in the area where sometimes they're appreciated and they're, they're, they're used and sometimes they're not. So it's kind of location-specific. My question has to do with the HOT team and whether or not the HOT team is operating at capacity and at the level of need. Do we think that if we increased, you know, added another HOT team member or added extended hours on the HOT team that we might be able to build those relationships with the, their clients faster and kind of with more consistency? And maybe create the connections into permanent and stable housing more quickly? Is that, and is that a kind of a rate-limiting factor or kind of a weak spot in our, in our system? It seems like HOT is kind of where, you know, right there at the ground level where we try to bring people to the system kind of actively as opposed to passively waiting for them to show up and ask for services or show up at the, you know, be referred to the homeless service center. Do we need more capacity in the HOT team and how do we know if we'd benefit from more capacity in the HOT team?
Samia, do you want to, we were talking about this this morning a little bit.
Yeah, I think it's a mixed answer. I do think having the conversation about week, around, around the weekends is, would be a welcome conversation to HOT and the city. I do think there are folks that need assistance and, and there's a big gap there when HOT is just operating Monday through Friday. I also think a lot of HOT's work is about building relationships in the community and you can't necessarily speed, speed that up, but having HOT team members available for that critical relationship building and not being asked to, you know, go across the city to camps and address business concerns here and there, you know, just having enough capacity on the HOT team to continue building those relationships. Just a real quick story, a HOT team member who's no longer with the team told me about, you know, months of, of getting to know someone who they just walked with and didn't, didn't talk to them. Noticed this person needed new shoes, bought new shoes. Again, more months went by of just walking with them and holding and offering the shoes before the person was even willing to, to take the shoes, the new pair of shoes from them. And this continued over the course of about a year before that they were able to have enough of a relationship to help them contact family members and, and move forward. The HOT team was initially created when Francis Place was being developed because we realized even though there were going to be 42 units for folks who are experiencing homelessness, being housing-ready was a huge barrier for folks, even for a development that was built to take homeless-on-entry individuals. There's so much preparation work and relationship building that was needed for that. So a little bit of both.
Samia, I really appreciate that story. And I, I guess there's basically a potential budget request in here. But before I could consider making a budget request, I would kind of need someone like yourself to look to see if, if there is a need in there. So I guess that's sort of my question. I would hope that, can I request the administration to look closer at the HOT team and see if, if there might be important gains to be made if, if we made that a fun, an increased funding priority? If that's not the weak spot in the chain, then there's no reason to increase the funding there.
Okay, go ahead, sir.
Well, just, this just relates Michael's question here at the end, of course, is related to Councilmember Stone's questions. We've run out of time in answering those today and I, I think they deserve to, they're, we deserve to have a robust discussion on that point. So there was reference to convening again soon, quote, to have that conversation, but I think that gets to the heart of it. Is there more that can be done in light of everything we've heard today? If so, what? If not, why? Presumably a reason that relates to all of the services that were mentioned today and are being provided. But that's sort of the, as it relates to policy in the near term, the conversation that, that needs to happen. Might I suggest that in light of the time issue, that I huddle with our team with Tara and Samia and Rick and any others and consider these questions and get back to the council and propose a time at which we might reconvene this discussion sooner rather than later, of course. And from that, Councilmember Liliquis, we can fashion a a request if that's, if that's your wish.
Okay, thank you, Seth. Any other discussion? Good. Thank you all very much.
I apologize, Councilmember Knutson. I, I know you're, I know we're way behind. May I just provide the briefest information that I think would be of interest to the council?
Sure.
Again, I apologize for this. I just feel duty-bound to convey this information. The, the, some of you may know, but many of you may not. Over the weekend, there was a investigation of multiple reports of flyers with swastika symbols downtown and in Fairhaven being posted. Again, I don't know if everyone's aware of this or not, but there's a story that went up this afternoon in the Herald about it. And I just wanted to bring it to your attention. The Bellham Police Department are encouraging people to report them. And any information they have about them, it potentially constitutes a hate crime under the revised code of, of Washington. Our police are asking that people not remove the stickers because they're potentially evidence of a crime. So I, I just wanted to bring that to your attention. We've made it absolutely clear that we condemn this sort of thing in our community. It does not represent our values. It's, it's obviously really disturbing. And I just wanted to bring that to your attention.
Chief Doll, yeah, thanks, Seth. Go ahead, Chief Doll.
Yeah, I mean, we've received over five reports beginning Saturday morning. And, you know, this is, this is a cowardly act. This is, this is what happens in, in the middle of the night when the person doesn't want to be seen or people that want to miss and they do this stuff. And it doesn't happen in the daytime because our community will not tolerate this. And, and I'm not challenging the people to show up in the daytime and do this, but this is not, this is not, our community will not tolerate this. And so I encourage people when they see something like that, and this includes the Patriot Front stickers, other, other, other flyers that are up there, to call 911. Let us come and take care of them. We have, this is an active investigation. I really want to find those involved. Like the mayor said, this has the capacity to be a classy felony. This is not funny. And whoever's doing it is creating a lot of alarm in this community. So, you know, like I said, it's cowardly act. And so please report it to us so we can take appropriate action.
Thanks, Chief. Okay, any older new business? Go ahead, Councilmember Stone.
Can I just ask a quick follow-up question to Chief Doll and Mayor Fleetwood in response to that last item? I understand the request to leave those posters or stickers in place. I'm just wondering what the response is by our staff if a call is made? Just because I don't want, obviously stickers staying up. We know the impact on community members to see those around town. So I'm just wondering what, what happens after they're reported or are they staying up for extended periods of time?
No, we're going to, what we want to do is we want to collect them. I want to get a photograph of them. It's good for us to know where they are to see if there's any other information that we might gain from the area, but we'll, we'll take them down and we'll impound them.
So it's not that they're not removed. They just want, you want them to be removed by your staff rather than the public?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anything else? Is there anything under older new business? Okay. Seeing none, we now will convene into executive session. We have one item, potential litigation, yes.
Can we go to approval of minutes?
Yes, yes, yes.
Thank you.
I forgot. September 28th afternoon committee meeting minutes need to be approved.
I'll move to approve.
Motion by Councilmember Huffman. They're second.
I will second.
Michael seconds. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, say aye. Aye. All opposed, motion carries unanimously. Now we will go into potential litigation claim number 2020-27 for approximately 15 minutes.